Good evening and welcome to the Cedar Falls School District Board of Education meeting on this Monday, April 10th. I want to welcome you all to the meeting. I'll call it to order. Our first item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Susie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nate. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Well, it's now my pleasure to introduce, we have a special group in the audience with us here this evening. That is the Cedar Falls High School Jazz One, and they have, for the second time in a row, won the state championship. Now, in case you're wondering, like, I thought, when I heard, because I haven't been, that sometimes you go down and there's like two teams competing. They're not. There are 15 teams competing, so this is a real honor and there's a lot of tough competition. And so I want to welcome Mr. Engelhardt to come and tell us a little bit about the accomplishment.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here and letting us recognize the students. We had an outstanding performance last Tuesday. We got to play in the day show, and they announced three through 15, and it's the top 15 in the state. And then the night show is the top two. So, we played great at 3:45 in the afternoon, and then we went back that night after a nice dinner out and got a chance to play at 9:45 at night, followed by Linmar at 10:15. And at about 10:45, they announced the awards ceremony, and our students were recognized as being tops in the state this year. So, we're really, really proud of them.
Wonderful.
Quickly, read through the names. If they're here, they can stand up. Gabby Townsend, August Phyllis Holden-From, Isabel Kuhat, Britton Atkins on the saxophone. On trombones, we had Alex Stoner, Kristen Engelhardt, Liam Hendrickson, Henry Rao. On trumpets, we had Pascal Kuhat, Taylor Johnson, Ethan Christ, Skylar Zimmerman, and Connor Trenell. In our rhythm section, Colton Thomas on piano, Paige Sommerfeld on guitar, Henry Giddens on bass, and Kate Gallion on drum set. So, these are outstanding, outstanding. It's been a really great year. The students have been working really hard. The practices started in August, and then in December, we got to play in Chicago at the Midwest Convention and represent our community and our state. First Iowa band to play there in 30 years. And we got to follow it up by learning all new music and having all kinds of new concerts and performances this spring, capping it off last Tuesday. So, we're really proud to represent our school and our state, and especially Cedar Falls. So, thank you for having us today.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Well, congratulations. Yeah, congratulations, each one, every one of you. Thank you for all your hard work. It's not just showing up for the performance, but it's all your practicing. I'm sure your parents can attest to that. So, congratulations. We celebrate with you. So, thanks again. All right. Well, Kiana, it's our student representative to give us a little update on what's going on in the, in the school.
Good evening. So good to see you all again. It's been a little bit. At the high school, individual speech had all stayed at U&amp;I two weeks ago. They also had a showcase at the Oster Regent Theater to show the public what they've all worked on. Congrats to all of our speech members. All city events are occurring for band, choir, and orchestra tonight, so good luck to you all. Rocket Club members are leaving tomorrow for a launch week in Huntsville, Alabama, for the NASA Student Launch Project they've been working on this year. Best of luck to the Rocket Club members and their launch. The solo ensemble for music is taking place this Saturday, so good luck to all of the members involved. Spring sports are off to a great start. Congrats to all the student athletes on their accomplishments thus far. 16 DECA members will compete at the international competition later this month. Good luck to you all. Do Better Be Better is April 22nd. Be sure to sign up to race by the end, by the week of April 22nd to score a super great shirt and an awesome donation for a Cedar Falls and Dunkerton student scholarship. Staff appreciation breakfast will be held on May 1st. We are excited to celebrate our staff on May Day with some exciting treats. AP exams are approaching. Best of luck to all of our exemplary students. You're going to do amazing. And finally, our blood drive will cap off the year on May 10th, where students will be participating and donating blood for those in need. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update. Good job. All right. We'll now move to the next year's school calendar, which has been published and has been subject to, published in the newspaper, and we had an open hearing on it. So, if, with no further ado, I'd ask for a motion to approve next year's school calendar.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the 2023-24 school year calendar as presented.
Thank you. Jenny, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. RJ? Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Now, moving on to the 2023-24 CFEA contract. Dr. Talbot.
Thank you. The recommendation I'm going to present will cover our teachers, counselors, and librarians. Currently, there are 439 individuals, a little over 460 full-time equivalents. Tentative agreement was reached on the 29th of March 2023 on a contract to cover a one-year period, July 1st of 2023 through June 30th of 2024. This tentative agreement has been ratified by the CFEA members. The economic items are as follows. We will add $1,800 to each cell in the 2022-23 base wage salary schedule. And unlike the past many years, there will not be a step advancement in that schedule. So, for practical purposes, people will stay on the same step that they're on currently, but that step will be worth $1,800 more. The lane changes will be processed for those who meet the requirements. The base wage generator for extracurricular athletics and activities will be $36,875. And then the specific percentages applied to that generator for the following activities positions shall be as follows. The head marching band percussion coordinator, that would have a stipend of 4.5%. Marching band pit percussion coach will be 1.5%. Colored guard coordinator will be 6.5%, and a high school choir pianist will be 8.5%. The base wage generator for the department chair schedule will be $36,395. So, the recommendation is the total salary increase, including lane advancement where applicable, FICA and IPAS, that would be 2.81%. We recommend acceptance of this tentative agreement. To remind the board members and those who may be listening or watching, insurance is an excluded subject of bargaining, and the employee contribution to premium for single coverage on the $750 deductible health insurance plan will increase by $5 per month from $142 a month to $147 a month. Consequently, the total package settlement, including FICA and IPAS and insurance, is 3.04%. The total cost of the settlement is $1,159,774.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Talbot. Could I get a motion a second, then we'll move for any, if there's any discussion.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 Cedar Falls Education Association contract as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? I'll just say that since I was, Susie and I were part of the, of the, representing the board on the bargaining team, and I just want to thank our, our teachers group for, this was an idea that we had discussed last year, and just didn't feel like it's different than any other agreement that's at least been in the recent history. But it was something that both sides really came together and creatively came to an agreement on, and that it, that it hopefully is a, is a win-win for everybody. So, I just want to thank the, the group for the willingness to try something new for our district, and as we, as we try and be innovative and, and help everyone as much as we can. So, thank you for that. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, and it carries. Moving now to the new high school equipment, which will need a little bit of explanation about this E-Rate and this special program. So, go ahead.
Yes. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about this. We don't have a slide, but there's a document within the board packets online as well. So, this is federal E-Rate program. E-Rate is a federal program underneath the direction of the FCC. There's an annual allocation of a little bit over $4.4 billion that are for public libraries, public school systems, et cetera. We've always used E-Rate in the past, but the threshold, the amount has always been a lot less than what we're asking for this year. And the reason we have more this year is because we're looking at the new high school for those expenditures. At the new high school, this E-Rate process is going to be for our switches and our wireless routers and the licenses that go along with those, as well as transreceivers and other things to, to allow us to have the connectability up there at the new high school. The reason why we're going through the E-Rate process, it's a federal bidding process. The prices are set through a competitive bidding allocation in its uniform across the nation, and then we get 50% off of that public bidding number that they bid out across the nation. So, you will see that there were different vendors, and every vendor has different products that fit underneath the rate, and they're bid out at different rates. But, our, our recommendation is to go to, go with Data Vision for $765,306. And then we get reimbursed 50% of that cost, which is a really good process, and again, a benefit through the FCC in this E-Rate process. Other vendors, there was a low vendor, but they did not include everything in there of 176,000. Other vendors were 790,000 and 1.2 million dollars. And then there's a scoring process you have to go through to be able to, to come up with if everything is covered, and, and is it the product that we want to make sure that we have the systemness and make sure that it works within our wireless capabilities and how we, we operate as a, as a district and a community with our internet Wi-Fi and wireless connection that's coming into our building. So, we're really excited about this and know that here in the next few months, we'll get reimbursed for half of the bid.
All right. Very good. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I move the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the E-Rate bid from Data Vision in the amount of $765,306.97.
All right. Thank you, Nate. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, moving to the 2023-2024 school year budget proposal and set public hearing.
Absolutely. So, thank you. Yeah. It is that time of year again. If we could go ahead and pull up the presentation for this evening. As you know, this is a little bit longer presentation for the evening. I know it's beautiful outside, so we'll definitely try and make it as quick as possible. But if you have questions as we move along, please certainly ask. But we'll go ahead and get started here. So, tonight, we're going to take a look at the key factors and comparison data. We'll also take a look at the levy rates, estimated property tax, and then we'll also look at the amended budget for 2223. And that's because, at the time of certified budget, there are expenditures that are not accounted for or anticipated for in the coming year. And so, it is a, it is our duty to ensure that we meet those according budgets and adjust them as needed. So, we'll take a brief look at that as well. So, as we take a look, this slide definitely looks familiar. I've shown this multiple times throughout presentations, but this evening, you'll see that we do have our governmental proprietary and fiduciary funds. We'll concentrate on that first silo. We'll take a look at our general fund, which does include our instructional support, our management as, a management levy, as well as then our physical plant levy and our debt service. Though we do budget for all of the other funds available, they are not included in that estimated property tax, in which we will talk about here in a little while. So, but again, this looks familiar. We've discussed it, but we will concentrate on that first silo. So, as we move forward, talking about the general fund, the aid and levy budget worksheet is a large, complex worksheet that we utilize. All districts are required to utilize that in the state of Iowa. It is included in your packet for your review, but it does implement the school foundation formula. It calculates the amount of spending authority, state aid, and property taxes for school districts. Its formula first determines the total maximum spending authority, and then it determines state aid versus property tax. We will take a look, a glimpse at the worksheet, but again, it is available within your board packet if you'd like to take a closer look. So, again, some of the four key, key factors that impact certified budget is enrollment, equalization, supplemental state aid, and balance. And again, these might look familiar to you. I've shown these during our district financials, as well as other times throughout the year, and we'll briefly review these as how they impact certified budget, because it is a discussion that we have to have at that time. So, in taking a look at enrollment, enrollment does determine the majority of the funding received for the district, and it is based on account of October 1st. So, for funding for fiscal '24, we look at October 1st of 2022. It is 75% of the general fund resources. There are two different categories. There's certified enrollment, and then there's served enrollment. Certified enrollment are those students living in the district, and that is funded specifically when we take a look at the certified budget. Served enrollment are those students that are attending from other districts. Just to, just to recall, open enrollment, those dollars do flow to the receiving district. And so, if we have students that are attending other districts, those specific costs do follow that student as well as they do as well for those open enrolling into the district. So, taking a look at our certified enrollment, this does provide an overview of October of 2014 through October of 2022. You'll note that our certified enrollment was 5,520 students. The red indicates the, the students that attend our district. The 127.5 are the students that are open enrolled out. Now, the certified enrollment, again, does not reflect open enrolled in. This is specifically certified enrollment. We do have several students open enrolled in. That is considered miscellaneous income when we take a look at those dollars received. So, we also do take a quick look at school similar size, and this is a three-year comparison cumulative change for certified enrollment, based on certified, based on certified enrollment of five large and five smaller than Cedar Falls schools. You'll see for the three-year cumulative change, Cedar Falls is 63.7 students. We sit rather favorably compared to the other districts, five larger and five smaller. So, the second key factor you're probably familiar with is equalization. And equalization, again, just to remind those, is legislation passed the law that cost per student across the state will be nearly equal, and to ensure every student equal access to quality education. So, for fiscal '22, the state, or excuse me, fiscal '24, the state cost per pupil is $7,635. As we discussed, there is a minimum, which is that $7,635, but there is a maximum of $7,775, a difference of $140. Now, of the 327 school districts in the state of Iowa, 103 of them do receive the, the amount larger than the minimum. Cedar Falls Schools is one of the 224 school districts that receives that minimum of $7,635. Now, when taking a look at the equalization, this just breaks down those school districts by dollar amounts. Now, the legislature has been working over the past several years to close that gap. Unfortunately, for fiscal '24, that gap did not decrease. It is the same as fiscal '23. So, there are no changes within that gap specifically. As we move forward, then, the third is our supplemental state aid. And as we look at supplemental state aid, that is legislature and governor-controlled, that annual increase. It is a simple calculation. It is the state cost per pupil of fiscal '23 times that state rate of growth. And that was 3% this year that the governor did sign, so that's an increase of $222 from the prior year. Again, there was no equity change additional. So, the, the new state supplemental state aid for fiscal '24 is $7,635, as mentioned previously. Again, the screen just depicts the, the differences within the, the districts across the state and those dollars in which they receive. One thing to remember is that the state foundation formula sets the expenditure ceiling for each school district's total spending authority, and it does tell the school district how to fund its spending authority. So, taking a look at the supplemental state aid and, and percentages, you'll note, the, the screen does indicate fiscal '17 through fiscal '24. With the exception of fiscal '19 and fiscal '24, the district has run higher than the state. The, the red line indicates the, the Cedar Falls district. The dotted line is that of the state supplemental state aid percentages. For fiscal '24, as I had mentioned, it was 3% signed by the governor. The district is anticipated to receive a little over 2.1%. And that is a direct impact of certified enrollment. So, those decreases and increases. So, taking a look, then, again, we always look at similar-sized schools. This is just, depicts those schools based on certified enrollment, five larger, five smaller. It provides what the cost per pupil was for each district, as well as their certified enrollment, the dollar, dollar growth, and what, what that percentage may be. You'll see, based on the comparison, Cedar Falls is currently 16th largest in the state, as well as then that percentage growth, as I mentioned, for fiscal '24 is a little over 2.1%. And you'll see that the increases and decreases for those districts accordingly. As we move forward, then, again, this is just the three-year average of supplemental state aid. Over the last three years, the district has the average of a little over $1.4 million for those three years. Compared to those districts similar in size, again, we, we continue to sit rather favorably. So, the last and final key factor that I've mentioned previously, and, and just reviewing really quickly, is balance, and that is the ratio of property tax and state aid supporting a district's budget, and that varies by district. Property-rich districts will receive less state aid. So, the uniform levy, all districts are required to levy this. It's $5.40 per 1,000 assessed valuation. The state does come, come in and backfill up to that 88.4% level. The state supplemental aid covers the property tax increase as a result of increase in cost per pupil. And then there are additional levies, and those do vary by district. So, and I'll show a, a picture of how that is depicted here shortly. So, taking a look at our assessed evaluation, as this does impact, the balances, you'll note, for fiscal '24, our total valuations increased a little over half a percent. Now, this is a change from original, originally provided, and that is due to the rollback error that, that was corrected by the legislation. Originally, our valuations were a little over 3%, which does impact, impact our available tax revenues. But because it, it, the county auditor had 15 days once the legislation passed to make those changes in evaluations, our valuations are a little over a half a percent. I'm going to just stop there for a second, if there was any questions. Okay.
Well, I mean, there is a question about, everyone has been getting notices about some significant changes in their assessed value, and so, I think there's an obvious question to say, are we just applying the same rate? And, and so, is there going to be a, a huge influx of, of new dollars that's coming to the school district as a result of all this change in assessed value?
That, that is a great question. The answer is no. That same rate or that percentage is not computed into the valuation and the determination. So, there, go ahead if you...
But, but that kicks in next fall.
Correct.
Right? So, do, so we see fiscal year '24 here, but this doesn't reflect those new So, do, so we see fiscal year '24 here, but this doesn't reflect those new assessed values?
Not for fiscal, oh, no, not for, go ahead.
No, so the assessed valuations that are going to be used for this tax levy rate is going to be the current assessments that were sent out last spring. So as we look to next year, as we look at setting that levy rate for the following year on those new assessed valuations, the levy rate will fluctuate because we assess as a public school district for a certain dollar amount. So we say we need to generate, let's make it easy, $1 million. And if the valuations all increase across the community, there's gonna be a lower property tax levy that needs to generate that $1 million. So the, the challenge is if somebody has a very significant increase in, in valuations, that might not be reflective in the overall levy rate, but it, it appears that that's been pretty uniform across our community because of the home sales and what happened during the 2020 slash 2021 kind of pandemic period where we had really robust home valuations, home sales, and the valuations, what I understand, are based on actual sales of what the valuation could be if put on the market. So that hopefully explains that in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But please ask other questions if you have them.
No, I think the, from what I'm hearing, I think the average is about 25% across the board, that it's going up. So then I would expect then the levy rates to come down for fiscal year '24 budget.
Correct. That, that's what we would anticipate. And then, as you add in overall growth in the community and what that may mean, hopefully that will have a fairly significant impact as we look to the future.
Okay. This is just the valuation per student, and this just is area schools, three-year comparison. So that would be those locally with Cedar Falls Schools, and you'll see that we continue to sit rather favorably with the valuations per student. And then again, we do compare those similar-sized schools, and with the exception of West Des Moines and Ames, again, we continue to be right there, similar to all of those other school similar size of certified enrollment. So in breaking down that combined district cost, and this is what I was talking about when we were reviewing the balance, you'll note that every district, again, is required to levy that uniform levy of $5.40. That equates to a little over $1,400 per student or 18.33%. Then the, the state does come and backfill that $5,764, or a little over 75.5%. And then, as well then, those additional levies, as I mentioned, of $471 are a little over 6.17%. So in short, the state contributes about 76%, and the local districts contribute about 24% of that state cost per pupil. So breaking down the combined district cost, this gets into that aid and levy worksheet, as I had mentioned. It does list the sections in which you can review this, as you reference this in your board packet. You'll note that the uniform levy, as I mentioned, that $5.40 equates to a little over $11.8 million. The district does not qualify for the regular program adjustment. This would be additional property tax if needed. That is not the case for fiscal '24, as well as then the final state aid of 40, excuse me, $40,914,823. This does include the teacher salary supplement, the professional development, the teacher leader compensation, early intervention, and then our property tax replacement, otherwise known as PETER. So in taking a look, then, this just discusses then, or shows the additional levies. Again, those are those additional levies required by the districts. You'll note the dollars associated to that for a net additional levy of $5,566,159, or a property tax rate of $2.50. So to summarize then, oops, excuse me, I hit the wrong button there. To summarize, then, for the combined district cost, we have that $5.40 with that additional levy equates to $7.90. Again, that regular program adjustment, there is no additional property tax associated to that. This does include our dropout prevention, which, if to recall, the district utilizes, that is our program within the district. The board did approve that on January 9th of 2023 for a little over $1 million for a property tax rate of 47 cents, for total tax portion of $18,350,486, or $8.37. And again, this just, just shows the '22, '23 combined district costs. We don't have comparable data for '23, '24, as districts are all going through the same process. But you'll note the districts in our surrounding areas, Cedar Falls currently is at $8.40 for '22, '23, and it's anticipated to be lower for '23, '24. And again, it, this does reflect those similar-sized schools based on certified enrollment, and you'll note, again, this is '22, '23, but we continue to sit rather favorably with that. This just shows the history of our district cost and dropout property tax rate. This is rather consistent from year to year. You will see fluctuations in that. This year, you'll note that for fiscal '24, the combined district cost is a little over $7.90, as I had indicated earlier in the slide, within that 46 cents for fiscal '24 for the dropout prevention. But again, it is rather consistent throughout from year to year.
And this would be the slide where we'd expect that with, if there's a 25% increase in assessed values, that, I mean, this is looking pretty flat, but what we could, could expect is that this will go down.
Potentially, yes.
Yep.
Yep. So within the general fund, as I've discussed in previous meetings, is our instructional support levy. And our instructional support levy is a five-year levy approved by the board, and it is 10% of our regular district program cost. And to remind you what is utilized for that, we utilize it for kindergarten teachers, as well as counselors, as well as, which is salary and benefits, as well as equipment, our one-on-one program within the district. You'll note that 10%, a little over $4.2 million, and then you have that calculation. One thing to note is the 1% income surtax dollars. This was new last year, where the board, the income surtax revenues are based on the amount of state income tax paid versus the actual property tax, so it lowers the property tax associated to that, but those funds are received from the state income tax paid by the residents. You'll note, then, for a total property tax for, or excuse me, for the adjusted instructional support program, a little over $3.2 million, for a property tax of a little over $1, $1.02 for fiscal '22, or excuse me, '24. I continue to say '22, I wanna go backwards. As we keep moving forward, then, we have the history of instructional support levy. Again, this does depict the property tax rates over the past several years. You'll note, then, in fiscal '23, that change, and that was due to the 1% income surtax. You'll see that decrease where it does shift to the, to the state income tax. So again, for fiscal '24 is a little over a dollar or two for all Cedar Falls residents in, for the state income tax. In addition, then, we also take a look at cash reserves. There's two parts to cash reserves. The first part is our SBRC-approved request, and that includes our increased enrollment, open enrollment out, LEP excess cost. You'll see those figures on the screen. Those were approved in November of 14 of 2022. In addition, then, a part of the SBRC costs are those special education, and those are excess costs of $365,251. Again, these were approved by the board on October 10th of 2022. So we have a total SBR-approved request of $80765. Just as a reminder, the open enrolled out, this is new for this particular year, is required to pay tuition in the current year, and we, that were not included in the certified enrollment count the prior year, so that is the request to make, to receive those dollars accordingly. The second portion is of the cash reserve. Part two is for cash flow needs. As we've discussed previously, we continue to watch our solvency ratio. We have done an extremely excellent job in making sure we have the funds available, but watching that ratio and meeting those goals of the board, as well as the recommendations of ISBE. Again, for, for part two of that, we are requesting cash flow needs of $500,000 for fiscal '24. So when we take a look at that, you'll see in section 15, our cash reserve levy, we have part one of $80765. We have the cash flow of the $500,000 for a little over $1.3 million, or property tax rate of 59 cents. Again, this just depicts the cash reserve levy tax rates. This does fluctuate from year to year. The reason it does is because of those dollars associated with open enrollment, LEP, special education, excess cost, and so it does fluctuate. And you'll note, again, this just depicts the breakdown of that, the SBRC versus the cash flow. The SBRC is that 37 cents, as then the cash flow is the 23 cents. So in summary of the general fund, this just shows you the dollars associated with the tax rates for those slides that were just reviewed, the combined district cost, as well as the dropout, instructional support, and then the cash reserve levy. You'll see the total of $22,112,164, or a tax rate of $9.99. And again, this just depicts the tax rate over the period of time from fiscal '17 to fiscal '24. Again, for fiscal '24, anticipated at $9.99. So in addition, there is the management fund, and the management fund is the restricted fund, and that cannot be used for salaries or benefits. It is specifically used for property liability, auto, workman's comp, compensation, or insurance premiums. This is a board of education-controlled levy. It also then provides property loss deductibles. The amount requested for '23, '24 is a little over $1.1 million with a property tax rate of 50 cents. And the reason for this request is we have received information that our building values will increase by approximately 15 to 20%, as well as the premiums have increased because of the, the, the environment, those changes, as well as the construction cost, the recent storms that have occurred. This is not just the state of Iowa, this is nationally. And so we do anticipate a need to increase that levy for fiscal '24 with those anticipated increases. This then does depict the property tax rate specific to the management fund. Again, this does fluctuate from year to year based on the expenditures associated to the management fund. You'll note, pre-pandemic, they were rather stable. Post-pandemic, they have increased each year, and that's because, again, of those increases associated to construction costs, building values, as well as the, the changes in, in all of the premiums. So then we have our physical plant and levy equipment, which is our PEPL, and again, that's restricted fund for two parts. The first part is the board of education-controlled, and that's 33 cents per 1,000 assessed valuation. That's considered our regular PEPL. And then we do have our voter-approved renewal, and that's $1.34, which is a levy for 10 years. Just to remind those watching, as well as those on the board, we utilize these funds for purchases and improvements of grounds, construction, also purchases of our buses, as well as our, our vehicles. Most recently, we're utilizing these dollars for the phase one of, of the natatorium construction, so. When we take a look at, then, the physical plant and levy, the amount requested for fiscal '24 is $791,450 for the regular, and a little over $3.2 million for the voted, for a total of $4,5218 for a property tax rate of $1.67. And again, this just depicts the dollars associated to the regular and voted PEPL property tax revenue. And our final levy that we will discuss is our debt service levy, and that, again, is a restricted fund that is not utilized for salary and benefits. It's used to pay the interest and the amount necessary to pay the principal of our, of our bonds. The board, or excuse me, the community graciously approved the $32 million and the $69, $69.9 million bonds. The voter was approved on April 2016. Those bonds were sold in February of 2017. For this fiscal year, fiscal '24, the property tax rate is a little over 96 cents. And then again, and that was utilized for the construction of Aldrich, as well as remodel of North Cedar and Orchard Hill. Then we have our $69.9 million, which is utilized for the construction of our new high school. Those bonds were sold in May of 2022 with a property tax rate for fiscal '24 of $2.14. This is not new to the community. This, we actually pre-leved in fiscal '23, so this is not a new levy tax rate on their statements. They would be familiar with that, but it is a change for fiscal '22 of $2.14. So the amount requested for fiscal '24 is a little over $7.4 million, and again, that is to pay the interest and the bonds due for a total tax rate of a little over $3.11.
I have a question. So the PEPL levy is affixed at 1.67, so then does that scale with property values?
Yes.
Accordingly?
Yes, and so as the property values decreased, the, the dollars did decrease as well, so they weren't as available to the community because of the valuation.
So then fiscal year '24, do we, do we expect a bump up, then, when we review this next year with that one?
Yeah, potentially. And again, there's so many of those factors that are, excuse me, out of our control when it comes to the state rollback amount for residential rollback, whether or not, once we get the final valuations of all properties, went, had the increase as we talked about, or if there's areas that have been held flat or actually decreased. So we just don't know some of that information yet. But yes, because it's a flat amount of the board-approved and the community-approved through the election in 2016, that is a stable rate, so the dollars that come from that stable rate can fluctuate up and down based on valuations.
And taking a look back at the presentation, then, we'll note, we'll get back on the correct slide, then the history of our debt service levy. You'll note, then, again, this does depict the two separate bonds, the $32 million, as well as the $69.9 million is when they were added. You'll see in fiscal '23, the $69.9 was pre-leved for, accordingly, on that. And then again, this is just the history of the debt service property tax associated to that. You'll note for the series 2017, that is the gold bar, you will see that that continues to decline as, as we had communicated to the community, as well as then that increase of the $69.9 for the fiscal '23, and then fiscal '24 property tax rate. So in summary, we take a look, you'll note, again, that combined district cost, as well as then the dropout prevention with the cash reserve, part one and part two, we had a subtotal general fund of a little over $19,651,251, or $8.96. We add in those additional levies of the instructional support, the management fund, the voted PEPL, the regular PEPL, and then that debt service. We have a total dollars of $34,681,251, or a total tax rate of $15.27. Again, the property tax breakdown, this just shows for every dollar received, 49 cents of that is the combined district cost, 21 cents of that is that debt service, dropout prevention is 3 cents, so, so on. The board has approximately a little over 19% in authority regarding the property tax when we take a look at this breakdown.
And if you go back just one slide?
Sure.
Just, I think just, it's important to note, because, yes, we have a limited amount of control, like you said, 18% of, and, and I would, I would focus even more on, like, what we really look at on an annual basis is that cash reserve levy, and then the management fund. You know, the cash reserve levy is a little bit lower than it was last year, but that's, that's us as a board, just discretionary, an injection of cash through property taxes for the liquidity, for the for the liquidity, for the for the general fund balance of the of the district. And then the management fund, that has been traditionally quite a bit lower because insurance premiums were much lower and and we're assessing that completely just outside of the other mechanisms just to fund the insurance primarily to to fund the insurance premium, and that's why that has gone up. So so really, those that called that 1.6 million out of a nearly $35 million budget is is kind of what on an annual basis, we those are the two levers that we kind of look at and really control, because the other ones are just sort of in
Standard.
Standard, you know, marching on based on prior decisions.
Correct.
Yep. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So when we take a look at the projected residential property tax, you'll note the property value based on $100,000 to rollback. The rollback change from fiscal '23 to fiscal '24. Again, then that tax rate change, you'll see that the the tax rate did decrease by about 55 cents from the prior year. So again, in fiscal '23, it was at $15.83. It was then for fiscal '24, anticipated to be the $15.27. The net change, you'll see that the change would be a decrease of $22.35. So this just shows the the process or the timeline in which we have to establish this budget as well as then publish the proposed budget. We will have a public hearing on April 24th with the adoption of the budget. You'll note this year, because of the rollback change requirements and with the county auditor, we have now until April 30th to file our budgets with the county auditor. And again, this is due to that rollback change calculation by the Department of Revenue. It is normally April 15th that is required, and that is reason for also the the budget presentation today, April 10th, as we were waiting for those valuations to be able to provide. So is there any questions before I move on to the amended portion of the budget?
What I would add too to this, just as an FYI, within the board packet, there's a breakdown of what the decrease will be within the, based on the 55 cent decrease in the overall levy rate, what that means for residential property going from 100,000. We use that for a calculator, so it's easier for people to say, oh, if my homes, you know, the assessed valuation is 300,000, you take the $22 last times three. But it goes into the commercial and industry, which decreases, as well as the multi-residential and ag land, which decreases as well. So just there's some sheets in there that are pretty easy to to then determine kind of where you might be at as far as overall decreases.
So before I move on, it is a separate agenda item for the amendment. So we would have to move on the board for with the board.
Yep, very good. So can I have a motion to approve the budget?
I move the Cedar Falls Board of Education direct the secretary to publish the budget estimate and notice of public hearing as required by law in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls Courier. And the public hearing for the 2023-24 proposed budget be held at 5:30 PM on Monday, April 24, 2023, at the City of Cedar Falls City Hall, 220 Clay Street, Cedar Falls, Iowa, 50613, as presented.
Thank you, RJ. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nate. We had our questions answered during the presentation, so move on to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, and that has passed and will move to the budget amendment for the current year.
Absolutely. If we can pull that presentation back up, we do at this time also take a look at the current fiscal year. The screen just depicts the Iowa code that allows the districts to review and and is actually required to review the expenditures. And it really is to to remind those that are watching, it's for those expenditures that weren't anticipated during the budget time at this at this time last year and approved. And so we do want to take a look at that. The one thing I do want to note that it is not an increase in property tax, it's only the the authority to utilize other revenues to ensure those expenses are are met. So and sources of reserves. So when we take a look at this, you'll see that there are four different areas for amendment. This year, it is recommended, based on the changes, to amend those four areas. And again, just to review for instruction, that amendment is specifically related to the reading curriculum that the board recently approved of a little over $1.2 million. And then the recent equipment that you rate that Dr. Patel just recently reviewed. It really is a timing issue. Some of those items may come in in this fiscal year, but they also may come in in next fiscal year. So we want to ensure we have that a budget authority. Then we do have our total support services, which again is just amended minimally for some additional operational expenses. We do have our non-instructional program, which is our food program. You'll see that there is an increase with that that is specific to the supplies and the food cost increase. We've seen increases for supplies, 14 to 21%, which has definitely made some impacts to our nutritional program as well. And then finally, those other expenditures is specific to our construction of the nadatorium. When we were approving the certified budget at this time last year, contracts were not received or signed by the board. And so we want to ensure as we continue with the construction of the nadatorium that that's included in 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 this in this fiscal year budget, as well as then 27th Street, the the beginning of that for issuing payment. So again, this is the same timeline as our budget for fiscal '24. Again, we will publish the budget amendment as well as then hold that public hearing with the filing with the county attorney auditor by April 30th of this year.
So I say this every year, and this is just me just, again, reiterating what we do and how we budget, which I think is a really good process. Some districts never go through a budget amendment because they 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 set their maximum budget as their authorized spending authority limit. So they say, we may spend 56 million, but we expect to, we're just going to set it at 60 million because that's our max authorized budget expenditures. What we do, and it's a testament to Donell and her team, is we line item everything. So we go with what we expect to spend, not our max authorized budget. So that's why we have to amend some of our budgets as things change from what was set 12 to 14 months ago or anticipated. That then changes the amount that we may spend, and and that's what's reflected within these budget amendments. It's really a testament to the to Donell and her team and and how precise we try to be on every dollar that's expended by the district. And as that changes over that length of time, it it means then we amend the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I was gonna, so other than the change to the non-instructional programs, which you said was caused by basically inflation and supply and food items, the rest of the items on here are caused by timing differences of how they how they're going to fall, whether, because our fiscal year begins on July 1st. So it it's some expenditures that maybe we're pulling forward that maybe would have been spent in July or August, and we're going to try and do it in May or May and June. So it's more, it's it's timing related rather than, hey, we we did a bad job of estimating. I don't want to, it's a hard, I don't want to make that make that make that kind of statement because you're dealing with something really, really complex, and there's a lot of moving pieces. But it's more, what's driving this is timing differences more than anything.
Correct. That is correct. And and as you know, phase one is not anticipated to be done for the nadatorium by June 30th, but there are there are construction items that are occurring that payments need to occur. And so we do need to include those within our amendment to ensure that we can meet those requirements legally with the Iowa code.
Excellent. All right. Great. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd call for a motion to approve.
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education set 5:30 PM, Monday, April 24, 2023, at the City of Cedar Falls City Hall, 220 Clay Street, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as the time, date, and place to hold a public hearing to amend the current 2022-23 school year estimated budget expenditures as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, RJ. All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign, and motion carries. Moving on to superintendent report.
Not a whole lot, really. Your next board meeting is April 24th with with finalizing the budget components. As you heard tonight, there's just a lot of neat things that are happening across our district. It's a testament to our staff, our students, our parents, our community, be it the Rocket Club going down to Alabama to to do their, I think it's their fourth consecutive launch with NASA, to our CAPS hosting our statewide leaders from school administrators of Iowa last week and being asked to present now at the annual conference coming up in August. There's to state champions and jazz band. It's amazing, the work that's happening across our district, the benefit our kids receive because of that. But again, it's a testament to to many, many people, all of our staff, our community, our parents, working together to to make sure that we we reach that that metric of excellence. And it's really exciting when you take a step back and and think about all the things that are happening, let alone graduation taking place here in five weeks and the culmination of what those students have gone through and their experiences the last 13 years. It's really, really exciting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
Could you give us a highlight real quick? Quick, I think in social media, we saw that the Christiansen funds were gifted
Yes.
For some equipment?
Yeah, really exciting. So Elna Christiansen was a graduate of Cedar Falls School System, High School. When she passed away, she did not have any direct descendants. She gifted the district a total of $1.3 million back about 25 years ago now. Those dollars were set aside for the school district. We actually moved those to the foundation probably now eight years ago because we were capped on the amount of investment we could do. So we were receiving about 1% investment benefit per year. We moved that to the foundation. I think the average has been close to about 12% over the course of the the time that shifted. What that is used for now is any direct or indirect benefit for student learning. We have not spent Christiansen funds for the last, I think, three years, maybe four years, knowing that there are going to be some things at the high school that we could use for potential enhancements, in this case, to help offset and and utilize for some unique furniture, as well as potentially some of the equipment at the high school. So the dollars amount that we're utilizing from the foundation through that Christiansen grant can't come close to any of the principal. It's just the interest generated off of that gift of $1.3 million that have been accrued the last multiple years. Timing was an issue. We we anticipated that there might be a little bit more revenue, but then with the turn of the investments in the economy, the last six to eight months, that was less than what we might have thought, but didn't impact what we could use those for in unique ways for student learning at the high school. Great question.
All right. Seeing no other, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. So I'll move. Thank you, RJ. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lowell. All those in favor say aye.
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 Both same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.